Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Regular Council Meeting. I remember what is called to order. If you're here to, actually, oh, first of all, council meetings can be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. Members of the public may also attend the meeting virtually through Microsoft Teams. If you're here to speak on items designated as public hearing items later on in the agenda, please know that you will have an opportunity to speak when I introduce those items at the time of their public hearing. The city council will need to complete the other items of business leading up to those items, so we appreciate your patience. If you wish to speak on a public hearing item and you haven't filled out a speaker card yet, please make sure to fill out and submit your completed card to the city clerk prior to the agenda item coming forward for council discussion. I will call your name when it is your turn for public comment. I would now like everyone who's able and willing to stand to join me in a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Tonight's agenda has a number of items that the city council must consider in order to conduct city business. Guidelines for conduct at city council meetings are on the table near the entrance for those in attendance at tonight's meeting. We're now going to play a video with the proper protocol for ensuring the appropriate conduct at city council meetings.
The city of Tempe welcomes public comment at this time. Disruptive behavior will not be allowed. Continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. We need to be able to hear everyone in the room. Behavior that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any city council meeting is not helpful and is not permitted. This includes behavior both inside and outside of the council chambers. Should individuals inside the council chambers become disruptive so that city business is not able to be conducted, the mayor will first ask that the individuals allow city business to be completed. There will be time for public comment during the call to the audience portion of the meeting. If no cooperation, the mayor will issue a verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is still no cooperation, the mayor will issue a second verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is no cooperation after asking and two verbal warnings, then the mayor will ask security officers to remove only those individuals who are causing the disruption. Security personnel should not engage in any way but only escort them from the council chambers. If individuals refuse to leave, security personnel shall warn them that they are trespassing and that the next step will be arrest by a Tempe police officer. Tempe officers may have to arrest if individuals refuse to leave. Charges for trespass and disorderly conduct may apply, as well as other charges. Should anyone be asked to be removed, the mayor will recess the meeting.
Thank you very much. We're now going to play a video conveying the city of Tempe's native land acknowledgement statement.
We wish to acknowledge that Tempe is the homeland of the native people who have inhabited this landscape since time immemorial. These ancestral lands of the Oatham, known as Pima, Peepash, known as the Maricopa, and their ancestors extend far beyond our city. This land continues to be spiritually connected to the Oatham of the Salt River Pima, Maricopa Indian Community, and Gila River Indian Community. We accept the responsibility of stewarding those places and solemnly pledge to consider this commitment in every action.
Thank you very much. We're going to now turn to item number four on the agenda, which is our meeting minutes. Tonight I'll be assisted by council member Hodge. Council member Hodge?
Yes. Mayor, I submit to approval of item 4A.
Actually, we don't have any, uh, anything for 4A this evening, just 4B.
Okay. Well, I submit acceptance of items 4B1 through 4B6.
Okay. It's been moved by council member Hodge and seconded by Vice Mayor Adams. Please vote.
I...
And that item passes six to zero with council member Keating absent. All right, next up here, we're going to go to reports and announcements. I have one here, actually I have two announcements, and I'm going to read this down here. Is Edgar Olivo here this evening? Mr. Olivo? Well, in that case, I will stay up here. This is a proclamation for American Red Cross Month, and that reads, "Whereas during American Red Cross Month in March, we recognize the compassion of people in Tempe and reaffirm our commitment to care for one another in times of crisis. And whereas this generous spirit is woven into the fabric of our community, it advances the humanitarian legacy of American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, one of the most honored women in our country's history, who nobly dedicated herself to alleviating suffering. And whereas today, kind-hearted individuals in our community exemplify Barton's commitment as they step up through the Arizona and New Mexico regions to provide a beacon of hope for our neighbors in need. Through their voluntary and selfless contributions, they make a life-saving difference in people's darkest hours, whether it's delivering shelter, food, and comfort during disasters, providing critical blood donations for hospital patients, supporting military families, veterans, and caregivers through the unique challenges of service, saving lives with first aid, CPR, and other skills, or delivering aid and reconnecting loved ones separated by global crises. And whereas hereby, we hereby recognize this month of March in honor of all those who lead with their hearts to serve people in need, and we ask Tempe residents to join in this commitment to strengthen our community and support the Red Cross in its humanitarian mission. Now therefore, I, Corey Woods, Mayor of the city of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare March 2024 as American Red Cross Month in Tempe, Arizona." And next up, item 5A2, Tempe Board and Commission Appointments. Just want to congratulate Bill Munch on his appointment to the Tempe Fire and Police Public Safety Personnel Retirement System Board, Mariah Justice, Kathleen Lamp, and Kristy Melcher on their appointments to the Historic Preservation Commission, Honorable Amy Kalman on her appointment to the Judicial Advisory Board, and Jim Foley on his appointment as a regular member on the Merit System Board as outlined in item 7A1 on this evening's agenda. That ends my announcements. I will look to item 5B, City Managers Reports and Announcements. Madam City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I have one announcement. I would like to congratulate Sonia Blaine on her decision. We're sad, but I'm happy for her. It's, I know it's a tough decision. She will be retiring after eight years with our city and two years in this post as city attorney. One of the things that I have known working with Sonia, and I know there's many dear friends in the audience who are going to miss her terribly, subject matter expertise on land use, economic development, housing, human resources, and funny as all get out. So the humor is always helpful in these very, very tough meetings. But honestly, I have to publicly appreciate and acknowledge the friendship. You have been a very strong role model woman in this organization, and it is very much appreciated, Sonia. Thank you for your friendship, the dedication to the people of this workforce, and as always, a true public servant with the work ethic that you have been exemplified, you have exemplified to all of us. We will miss you.
Next up, item 6, Public Appearances. According to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the city council may only discuss matters listed elsewhere on this agenda for discussion and legal action. The purpose of the open call to the public is to allow individuals to address the city council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the city council. No person shall speak more than once, and there is a limit of three minutes per speaker. Speakers present at the podium must state their name and city of residence and provide a speaker card. Members of the public shall refrain from making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks and from becoming boisterous while addressing the city council or while attending the meeting. Speakers will be taken first come, first served in the order in which the cards are received. Speakers' visual aids and appearances by phone or recordings are not allowed. Council members are prohibited by state law from taking action on, commenting, or discussing a matter raised by a member of the public, even if asked to do so by a member of the public, so long as the subject discussed by the speaker is not listed as a specific agenda item for council's consideration for discussion and legal action. At the conclusion of public appearances, the council may ask the city manager to review a matter or place a matter on a future agenda. Before I get started too, I wanted to turn to our city attorney who had a special remark for this evening as well.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to make, um, have some words with members of the audience who might be here wanting to talk about a matter that is currently pending with a court. Council is unable to comment on any matter that's currently pending before a court, and I did want you to know that just to manage your expectations if you do decide to come up to the podium for public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. With that, I will get once again to the cards here this evening. I'm taking these in the order in which they received. The first speaker I have this evening is Scott Barron. Please come forward, state your name and city of residence. You have three minutes.
Uh, thank you very much. Scott Barron, I live in Tempe. Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight. I would like to comment briefly on the proposed renovations at Ken McDonald Golf Course that were recently made public. I appreciate many aspects of this plan, including an updated clubhouse. I am concerned, however, with one aspect of the proposal, which includes the construction of a very large parking lot that is adjacent to this new clubhouse. My first concern is the green space the city will be eliminating by creating a new parking lot. The proposed parking lot will be built on what is currently a beautiful and very well utilized multi-acre chipping green. You can go to Ken McDonald throughout the day and see this chipping green being used by everyone from regular players to beginners, and perhaps most importantly, children in junior clinics and high school golfers on Tempe Union Golf Teams. This chipping green is a vital and free service at the course for people who want to take advantage of the course but may not be financially able or ready to play the course. The written renovation proposal indicates that the chipping green will be relocated. My study of the renovation rendering show no indication of a replacement chipping green. As far as I can see, the renderings show that the existing driving range and putting green are staying exactly where they currently stand, and the existing chipping green is simply being eliminated. Where is the new chipping green going to be relocated at the golf course? My second concern is that the new parking lot will essentially be in the backyard of several adjacent homes, where these homes currently have a gorgeous grass chipping green outside their fence, they will now have a parking lot with, from the words of a proposal, a landscape buffer. My final concern relates to effective space utilization. The new parking lot shows 145 spaces. The existing parking lot just south of the course has approximately 250 spaces, with probably 100 that are used by the YMCA. The new parking lot will create a situation where the city has many current spaces, approximately 145, that will no longer be used. This abandoned lot will be an eyesore, as the current lot will become virtually empty as visitors gravitate toward the new lot. Yes, the new parking lot is slightly more convenient to the clubhouse. Is that convenience worth the cost of putting a blacktop surface in a place where we currently have grass? Is that convenience worth the cost of eliminating a service that is utilized by hundreds of players each week? Is that convenience worth the cost of abandoning a parking lot and thus creating an empty blacktop space? I would like to conclude with a request. I ask that each of you take time in the near future to visit Ken McDonald and experience this chipping green to see its value. You're likely going to see many citizens happily taking advantage of it, and I think you'll agree that putting a blacktop surface space is not a good idea in that space.
That's tough.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. The next speaker I have this evening is Jaclyn Smith. Is Jaclyn Smith here? Okay, seeing no one. My third speaker this evening is Shira. Please come forward, state your name and city of residence. You have three minutes.
My name is Shira James. I'm a resident in Awatuki but lived here in Tempe for many years. I'm a board-certified occupational therapist, mother of two young boys, and advocate for the homeless community here in Tempe. I stand here tonight deeply connected to the city, having lived here for 15 years, graduating from ASU, working as a Tempe public school educator, and as an active member of my Tempe-based synagogue. This city has shaped me into who I am today, and it's important to speak out today on the crisis we're facing regarding increased homelessness. Homelessness in Arizona is up 30% since 2020. We all know there's no simple solution to end homelessness, but we also know there are things we can do to make things better and to help those who are truly suffering. I specifically want to talk about Austin Davis and the incredible support he's providing to our homeless community through his weekly feeds, as well as his ongoing support he provides for the homeless. These gatherings are more than meals. They offer a gateway to essential services, detox programs, housing assistance, and trustworthy support. I've seen firsthand how he works tirelessly to help people get off the streets. I know that the city is taking steps aimed to increase homelessness, such as hiring security guards as well as park rangers. I believe the city's intentions are good, but this is not the way to help solve the problem we're facing. I propose a more constructive approach. Why not provide support to the homelessness, to the homeless instead of giving them citations and kicking them out of parks? Why aren't we sending navigators or social workers to the parks to help get these services to the, to the people who really need them? This could be a cost-effective way to genuinely support those in need, aligning more closely with Tempe's, Tempe's community values. Through my weekly volunteer work with the Ayers Foundation here in Tempe over the past six months, I've witnessed the power of offering a helping hand. We provide more than just food. We offer health care, support, addiction resources, and a sense of belonging. I've built real relationships with people living on the streets. I know they're hurting and that they need support and love. This is about more than just addressing homelessness. It's about fostering a community that uplifts every member. I've seen firsthand people come to these feeds week after week, their lives slowly improving due to the support that we provide to them. Tempe is facing a growing need for affordable housing, which exacerbates the homelessness crisis. Instead of distancing ourselves from this issue, let's tackle it head-on, supporting initiatives like Austin's that offer real tangible help. Thank you for considering this approach to nurture a more inclusive, supportive, and united Tempe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker I have is Tiffany Good. Is Tiffany Good here this evening? All right, seeing none. The next speaker I have is Jessica Walburn. Oh, yes, okay, great, thank you. Please state your name and city of residence. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Walburn, Tempe resident. Good evening, council members. I am here to address an issue that I have come across in Tempe. My name is Jessica Walburn. I'm a Tempe resident, and I live across the street from Papico Park where there is a large unhoused community. I'm also the outreach coordinator for a local nonprofit called AANHPI for Equity, and I stand here in representation for them as well. I'll begin tonight with Proverbs 31:8 through 9. Speak up for those who cannot speak for themselves, for the rights of all who are destitute. Speak up and judge fairly; defend the rights of the poor and the needy. As you all are aware, my friend and the good Samaritan, Austin Davis, with AZ Hugs, has received numerous citations for food sharing in our public parks, demanding that he stop feeding the poor, hungry, and unhoused. With the amount of citation, it has now led him to criminal charges, which he is potentially facing jail time. Austin should not be facing charges for addressing our unhoused folks' most urgent needs. The business owners and homeowners who do not relate to our adversities have been the voice of false accusations and shallow complaints, also known as lies, about what's happening at these feeds. With over 300 unhoused community members here in Tempe and no food sharing programs, are you really expecting us to let our people, God's people, starve and be ignored as if they do not exist? In Luke 3:10 through 11, it reads, "What should we do then?" the crowd asked. John answered, "Anyone with two shirts should share one with who has none, and anyone who has food should do the same." In addition to AZ Hugs, my coffee and donuts program through the organization, which also serves the unhoused folks, was shut down, and other church groups doing feeds were also shut down. We are living in a time where we are divided, the rich and the poor. The truth is, God created us all to love as He loves us. So what is the solution? It's unity, solidarity, coming together at one table to include representation from community organizations, folks with the lived experience, our youth, the elderly, and of course, our city leadership. We know how the city of Tempe loves to be recognized for being the first, the best, and the most improved. So I invite you to be the only, the only ones who dare be righteous and just. I ask that the charges be dropped against Austin Davis and that we welcome an alternative approach to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next speaker I have is Mario Martinez. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. We have three minutes.
My name is Mario Martinez. I live in Tempe. I question whether criminal charges against Austin Davis are warranted. As for the mayor, police, and prosecutors, this is not, who are considering these charges, this is not the first time they screwed up. Let's see. I was arrested, I was arrested for DUI, which carried mandatory jail time, and I was convicted of zero DUI offenses, and the case was so weak that they didn't go, even go to court for, for DUI offenses. When you arrest people for DUI and don't even take it to trial, one of two things happen. You either arrested the wrong person, or you let a potential DUI, a potential DUI driver who could be a killer, you let him off. Either way, you, either way, the police and the prosecutors involved in this case, as well as the mayor who's supposed to oversee them, are a bunch of DUI enforcement losers. It's no wonder we have a DUI problem here in Tempe. Believe it or not, crime really does happen in Tempe. I happen to be, let's see, I have two broken teeth in my, right now, that I paid $4,000 for over the last 37 years that was a result of a DUI-related assault, okay? I know what it's like to be there, and now I gotta pay $10,000, $12,000 to get off on a DUI charge that I never committed, and then you guys, you're, you're considering, you're considering, uh, charging Mr. Austin, Mr. Austin, I forget his last name, I'm sorry, with this. I mean, you are, you are prosecuting the wrong people. That's all there is to it. Right in my neighborhood where they arrested me for DUI, there, there was a lady that drove through the, let's see, through the window of a Verizon store, jammed her and pinned, she crashed through it, and then she, let's see, she pinned the, the sales clerk against the wall. It was horrible. The Tempe police, they should, they should at least arrest her, you know, if they arrest her before that happened, we wouldn't have this casualty. I don't, I know that doesn't, you know, that's a high order, but this is ridiculous. The reason I couldn't do the walk and turn is because I have a hip replacement, okay? And I also have, let's see, I had a ruptured appendix at the time. And then here you are, you know, prosecuting Austin here? This is, this is not right. This is not where our resources should be, be put, put in. He is just trying to help the people, and I think that we should do that. Do your job for a change, Corey, and show up.
Next speaker is Lonnie McLaughlin. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Lonnie McLaughlin. I am a Tempe resident. I'm here as proof that Austin Hugs heals. He put his arms around me and not once but twice has kept my family off the streets. Through the grace of God, I am thankful to have met him and honored to serve by his side. I was released from prison in May after 15 years, and I also have a history of substance abuse. I consider the people he helps, my brothers and sisters, and I'm here to, I'm here to be their voice. I have heard so many stories of hate crimes against the homeless, and I know that no human deserves to be treated like that. Austin is not a criminal. He is a, he is only doing God's work in loving our neighbors as he loves himself.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. The next speaker I have this evening is Darlene Justice. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Darlene Justice. I've lived in Tempe since 1965. I'm here to discuss 7C1, the Canvas of Election Results. Mayor Corey Woods, you have the most outstanding leadership and direction for Tempe. Your award-winning housing initiatives are great. Your unrelenting support of historic preservation is wonderful too. Thank you very much. Saving Tempe's history and most important buildings. Dorian Garland, thank you for awakening the leadership in the city of Tempe regarding indigenous people and the importance of Tempe citizens and their children knowing this history. Randy Keating, thank you very much for supporting the annexation of the North Tempe, North Tempe County Island, along with a couple other people sitting here, Joel and Jennifer. Thank you for your support of the Papico Park Preserve, as many did, and also the Desert Conservation Commission, which has a Native American commissioner. Thank you to Nikki Amber for you, for her experience and wonderful ideas, especially the collaboration within the cities that are, that are going under the same types of issues. I think that's a great idea. I've heard a lot of things about the homeless and that. I want to thank you all for CARE7 and Hope. I have used that and called them many times, and they have helped people get their ID. They have helped them get places to stay. They have helped with them in many, many different ways. I even have a little card that has phone numbers on it from the Tempe Police Department that I've handed out to people in Tempe to call Hope and CARE7. Thank you very much for purchasing motels and that can be transitional housing and, and that. I'm sorry for some of the things that have, people had the feelings that they have, but people need real help to get off the street, and I think that Tempe is supplying that. I was going to come up here and say, I'm not allowed to have props. If I could, I'd have a plane. It's a beautiful day in the neighborhood. And I think it is, and I think that more work of groups together in that and dealing with homeless, we've, we've seen a lot of other sides of things too in the park. And I just want to thank you though for being here and for being strong. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. The next speaker I have is Dean Pedradie. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Mayor, council members, thank you so much for allowing me to talk tonight. My name is Dean Pedradie, and I am a Phoenix resident. I'm here to talk and, and in my support of Austin Davis and Arizona Hugs to feed homeless individuals here in Tempe, and I wanted to share with you a short story of a homeless youth, youth that I've been working with for the last 12 years that's here in Tempe, and the Austin's, Austin's ability to help us get him into care. Just as a, just kind of set the stage, although I'm not a Tempe resident, I've been closely involved and was an early board member in Mulligan's Manor, and that's an LGBT group home, the first thing in Arizona that opened up here in Tempe several years ago. The individual I'm going to talk about, his name is Joe, and he was one of, one of Jenny's first kids. And, and incidentally, Mulligan's Manor is truly a home. Anyway, Joe was a youth, but due to underlying mental illness and childhood trauma, he exited from foster care at 17 from a Level 1 group home. He's been homeless here in Tempe ever since. I became and evolved early on with him because of my association with Mulligan's, and has been a behavioral health advocate as he transitioned out of foster care. Last year I became his guardian. Unfortunately, because of our foster care system gives kids coming out of foster care unrestricted funds, Joe is also a meth addict. So now he's facing, he's dual diagnosis, he's facing mental illness as well as drug addiction. In fact, last fall, he overdosed on fentanyl, and if it wasn't for the life-saving action of a Tempe police officer, he would have died. So I thank that officer, Tempe PD, and the city of Tempe for supporting the Narcan team. Unfortunately, Joe was really an 11-year-old in a 23-year-old body, and that's where Austin comes in. I have over 200 years... I have over 200 emails from Austin over the last year in his numerous efforts to help Joe. He's given him birthday presents, food, clothing. When he has underlying paranoia, Austin will find somebody that sits with him and cares for him that night. I was shocked tonight as guardian to find out when I talked to Austin. Austin has helped him get into foster, excuse me, get into detox, sober living, and residential treatment time. I did not realize and embarrassed to say as a guardian, I did not know Austin did that eight or 10 times this last year alone. He's in, he's part of our support team with his, with his coworkers at LifeWell. I say this because Austin sets a relationship and a tone and works a level of trust with individuals. Joe has defiance disorder. He is really struggling. Under secured care legislation, we could get him into involuntary treatment, but those programs don't yet exist in Arizona. So he's yours, he's mine, he's Austin's, he's LifeWell's. I urge you to support and help these individuals. They really need your care. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker I have is Jim Freedom. Please state your name and city of residence. We have three minutes.
I am Jim Freedom. I am a resident of Earth. I'm here today in support of Austin Davis and in protest of your unethical actions against him. I heard the complaints from a few residents in this building a couple months ago, so I went to investigate what was going on for myself. I spent several Sundays with Austin at the park, observing for many hours each time, searching for evidence of trash, drugs, needles, or crimes. Those are the claims of the few residents, but those claims are based on homeless stereotypes, not facts related to Austin Davis giving away food. In fact, it was you, the city governments, that forced hundreds of homeless people out of their river-bottom encampments and into the parks and downtown areas. You made that happen because you wanted a new stadium in that area. If there has been an increase in trash or crime, it is directly related to the decisions you've made in this room. And now you're trying to blame the results of your actions on a person you know can't afford to properly defend themselves. The person you're attempting to punish does more than give away food. He provides friendship, information, advice, and connections to resources. You don't care that he does these things, you only care that he does them without a permit. You want paid for his efforts. It's pathetic. It's not only that, of course, you want to be able to dictate exactly how, when, and where this man puts food on a table to let people eat. You try, he tried to pay for your permission, and you told him he must stop while you think about it for up to six months. Forcing him to stop as you attempted to do while he applied for your permit and as you are still trying to do with five pending charges against him would leave you with a homeless population that's now desperate to find a new source of food and other resources. Some of them desperate enough to steal food to eat. Can you comprehend how that would make you the cause of that effect? I believe you do understand that, you just don't care because you'll score another plea bargain for the city. You know what he's doing is not causing harm. That's why you're forced to resort to specially crafted city codes that clearly and arrogantly violate the fundamental principles of freedom. You tried to intimidate him into stopping by sending cops multiple times. You escalated your intimidation by forcing him into the plea bargain assembly line that is the court, and you continue your intimidation with your new camera station 30 yards from the picnic that is meant to make them uncomfortable and insecure. So much taxpayer money spent, tens of thousands of dollars, if not more, between the cops, judges, lawyers, office clerks, and many other costs. All this cost to us, the residents, because some guy is giving away food without your permission. In this situation, you are nothing more than a bully, picking on a small charity that you know you can beat. I [bleep] hate bullies.
Stop it. Next up, Amanda Everett. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Amanda. I've lived in Tempe for over seven years now and in the East Valley my entire life. I'm here to ask the city to drop the charges against Austin Davis, an organizer with AZ Hugs, and pursue more productive measures to help our unhoused neighbors, such as a compassionate Housing First approach. Earlier this meeting, Mayor Woods, we heard you declare this month American Red Cross Month, where you quote, "recognize the compassion of the people in Tempe and reaffirm our commitment to care for one another in times of crisis." I can think of nothing that embodies the spirit of this month more than the work that AZ Hugs does. I'm happy to hear, as one of the previous speakers has said, that you all have made some changes to help the homeless. However, as I'm also sure you're aware, there are still massive gaps that organizations like AZ Hugs fill. As a Tempe resident, I value the well-being of my unhoused neighbors more than permits. If I wasn't fortunate enough to have friends and family with the resources and kindness to help me in the past, I could easily be in the need of the resources an organization like AZ Hugs provides. In fact, the vast majority of Tempe residents, like most Americans, are only a few missed paychecks away from losing shelter. I understand rules are often in place for good reasons, such as the public good. But at times like these, when they become a hindrance to public good, we should stop and consider the choice to apply them so aggressively. In my opinion, the good AZ Hugs is doing to help alleviate the pains of a growing housing crisis, which is driven by things like mass private equity home purchases, landlords fixing rent prices, and the double blow of corporate deflation and wage stagnation, those, that good is far more important than some paperwork and merits special consideration. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. The next speaker is Adrian Mestas. Did I pronounce that correctly? Excellent. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. We have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Adrian Mestas, a resident here in Tempe, Arizona. I would just like to speak on behalf of Austin Davis, that he has done so much wonderful things. I mean, he has brought food to us when we're out there cold. He brings us blankets, clothing, whatever is needed. You know, he's a very great person, and I speak on his behalf. If you could, please just, like, I don't have no written notes or anything like that. I'm just doing this off of my heart and off my mind. You know, like, like they were saying about the Red Cross, you know, if you could bring forth like some HUD and some things. I'm, right now, I'm over in Motel 6, and I'm sure appreciative with, with all that. But then there's more that can be done. If, I'm a very educated and well-educated person, and if you guys can bring forth something else besides that, to open up jobs, things that are more educational, things that we can look forward to, to do, to open up these things. And, you know, if you could please just like drop his charges, because he's doing so much, and that's all I got to say.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next speaker I have is Kansas Kansas. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. We have three minutes.
Hello, my name's Kansas. I live in Mesa, but I just recently moved there from Tempe. I have worked with Austin Davis, first as a volunteer, but then as a part of AZ Hugs since November 2021. So that's coming up on three years now. Okay, and I, you know, I know how he operates, and I know how AZ Hugs operates. And I promise you that these citations are misdirected. Austin spends countless hours out there cleaning the park and being with the people. You know, all these complaints from citizens about needles and trash. You know, that's not Austin's fault, and that's not AZ Hugs' fault. You know, like, what the homeless popu, first of all, I think the numbers of the needles were bloated. I really don't think there's as many as those people are saying. But on top of that, you know, AZ Hugs only gets people off the streets, only cleans up the park. We are not the ones making that mess, and it is not, and it is not our fault. I have filled in for Austin on some Sundays where he has to step out of town, and I have to run the Sunday feed. And let me tell you, we're out there until like 9:00 PM at night, just cleaning trash. Some not even trash that our guests made. So all, all these complaints are misdirected. And, you know, and I see you guys, or I see the police and cracking down on not just us, but other organizations and churches, you know, trying to feed the homeless population here in Tempe. And I think that's insane. I mean, you know, like, what it really comes down to is a difference in values, right? You know, Austin applied for this permit. You asked him to stop while you considered it, and he kept going. Because you can't just rip a resource out of someone who's needy. You know, they, they need that resource. They rely on it week to week. And so he kept going. And then you denied him for disobeying the orders and the wait time. But really what that tells the people here in the city is that you value obeying this ordinance more than you value these people's lives, because they are relying on Austin, and he can't just stop. I mean, that would be unethical for him to stop. And nobody wants to live in a city that values ordinances over people's lives. So I urge you to use all your power to change course on this and drop the charges on Austin. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the cards I have this evening. I want to ask, is there anyone else in the audience wishes, oh, yes, Mr. Caraway? Please come forward and state your name and place of residence. We have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Lane Caraway. I've been a citizen in my neighborhood, Cavalier Hills, for 25-plus years. Prior to that, almost five years, looking for somebody to sell their house in my neighborhood. I've been listening to a lot of this, and I've been very vocal about the feeding in the parks. I've heard, hey, we've been out there all night cleaning up. But what you don't realize is what happens an hour later, two hours later. It gets trashed out. Just recently, well, today, one of my neighbors is concerned about there's a drug addict behind her home acting like a dog, so she had to call the police. She's tired of having all this. Everybody on this dais has worked for almost four years to help my neighborhood get cleaned up. Last year, around Thanksgiving, we had a total switch. We started getting more and more people coming by my house. I shouldn't have 74-plus people coming by my home doing fentanyl on the sidewalk or using a crack pipe on the sidewalk or passed out in my flower bed. None of our neighbors should have that. When you talk about money, look at all the money that the city has poured in to try to clean up my neighborhood and make it safer for the residents. When you feed, you have to insulate your communities around there. This is not what's happening with these people. Once you feed them, these guys go on their way. They're left to defend for themselves. I had, I met Jesus today again on the corner of Scottsdale McKellis, just some shorts on, telling me he's Jesus. And I'm like, rolled my window up because I'm, he's leaning into my window, and I'm waiting for the light to change. The problem is, if you're going to feed, it needs to be away from neighborhoods. My neighborhood is the first closest one with exception of the one to the east of there, the condos. I can tell you right now, there's 188 homes in my neighborhood. 186-plus hours would support this decision to ban these feedings till you get some control over these individuals that are doing this. If they're going to be defiant and refusing to cooperate, and then when you say they're not helping these people, everybody that's asked for help in city of Tempe, have they not been helped? These are service-resistant individuals that don't want housing. They want everything else but that. And when it comes to these, call them lies, they're not lies. I tell you, anybody want to come live in my neighborhood? Austin drives down my street. If he sees somebody, he stops, gives them whatever they need. That is encouraging these individuals to come into my neighborhood. Goes to the QT. He goes up Scottsdale Road. This type of behavior is not helping the situation. There are programs in city of Tempe to help these individuals. They're service-resistant. They don't want housing. And if they do want housing, it's because of the barriers. They want to do their drugs and so forth.
That's time. Thank you. Thank you so much. All right. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the city council? If so, please get my attention. All right, seeing none, I will close that portion of the meeting and move to item number seven, which is our consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda will be considered as a group and will be enacted with one motion by the city council, unless an item is removed for separate consideration. Members of the public may remove public hearing items for separate consideration. Public hearing items are designated as public hearing item at the beginning of the item title. Council members may remove any item for separate consideration or to declare a conflict of interest. If a council member would like to declare a conflict at this time, the city clerk will provide the council member with a disclosure form. If you wish to speak on a public hearing item, please fill out a speaker card and submit your completed card to the city clerk prior to the agenda item coming forward for council discussion. I will call your name when it is your turn for public comment. This evening, the consent agenda is as listed, miscellaneous items 7A1 through 7A7, awards of bids and contracts, items 7B1 through 7B16, and resolutions, items 7C1 through 7C2. Once again, any agenda item that's designated as a public hearing item can be removed by a member of the public for separate consideration. If anyone would like to have a public hearing item removed, please get my attention now. All right, seeing none, I will look to our clerk here to see if there are any comments received from the public wishing to address the city council on a consent agenda public hearing item.
Nothing on this section. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counsel, any other agenda items that you'd like to have removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration?
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Hodge.
Seconded.
Seceded by Vice Mayor Adams. Please vote. And Councilmember Hodge?
Coming. It's coming.
And that item passes 6 to 0 with Councilmember Keating absent. That means I will move on to the non-consent agenda. All non, all items listed on the non-consent agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard, but will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. Council members who may have a conflict of interest may abstain from voting on a matter, and the city clerk will provide the council members with a disclosure form at this time. The first item under this section, which is 8A, miscellaneous items, bids, contracts, resolutions, is 8A1, which is to award a one-year contract with four one-year renewal options to Express Scripps Incorporated, who will provide pharmacy benefits management services for eligible city employees and their dependents to be administered by the Human Resource Department. Counsel, any comments or questions? It's been moved by Councilmember Hodge. Do I have a second? Seceded by Councilmember Navarro. Please vote. And that item passes 6 to 0 with Councilmember Keating absent. The next item under the section is 8A2, which is to award job order number 2 to Calianti Construction Incorporated for the facility renovation Tempe Fire Medical Rescue Burn Building Project, located at 1340 East University Drive. Counsel, any comments or discussion? Been moved by Councilmember Navarro and seconded by Councilmember Chin. Please vote. And that item passes 6 to 0 with Councilmember Keating absent. The last item under the section is 8A3, which is to award the construction contract to Auction Gardner Construction LLC for the downtown streetscape improvements Mill Avenue, Rio Salado, Parkway to University Drive project. Counsel, any comments or discussion? Been moved by Councilmember Hodge, seconded by Councilmember Chin. Please vote. And that item passes 6 to 0 with Councilmember Keating absent. The next section on the non-consent agenda is I ordinances and items for introduction and first hearing. The items under the section will be read and introduced tonight, but no votes will be taken. The second hearing and votes for these items are scheduled for April 4th, 2024. First item under the section is 8B1, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the granting of a license agreement for utilities to Selco Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless over certain city-owned land on West Court, West, West Court Way, and authorizing the mayor or his designee to execute an easement agreement and related documents. This is a public hearing item, so I'll check to see if there's anyone who wants to address the council on this item this evening. I would be shocked, but I gotta check anyway, because it's my job. All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing portion. Counsel, any comments or discussion? All right, hearing none, the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for April 4th, 2024. The last item under the section is 8B2, which is to hold the second public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a planned area development overlay to modify heightened building requirement, heightened parking requirements, and a development plan review for a new 14-story mixed-use development consisting of 239 dwelling units and ground-floor commercial uses on .49 acres for College and Seventh Mixed Use. Located at 706 South College Avenue, the applicant is Gavage and Burnham PLC, and I see Mancha LaVaz. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For your record, Mancha LaVaz, Law Firm of Gavage and Burnham. I was here last two weeks ago to talk about Seventh and College and Mixed Use on the first public hearing, and I know we were still working out some parking and... and I know we were still working out some parking and some heights, so we've come to an agreement. And I really want to thank Ryan and Jeff, who have been great and super helpful in this process, and all of you to talk about it. So, we're back for another first public hearing. We've made kind of a legislative edit that I wanted to go through with you. So, just as a brief, I know we talked about it, for anybody who wasn't here. This is at Seventh and College, so the site of where Student Book Center is, and College Street Deli, for those of you who remember, and-- as all of us do, because that's what I think of it as. Anyway, and we're gonna bring restaurants back, not the College Street Deli, but something better. But, so we're very excited. But in effort to kind of move this along, what we have kind of agreed to is we're going to increase the height of the building a little bit to fourteen stories, add thirty units, which will allow us to pay for additional parking. And so we'll get to the parking number that the staff is comfortable with and we are comfortable with. So we will be having a fourteen-story building with two hundred and thirty-nine multifamily residential units. You can see the mix, we've increased the studios a little bit, and some of the two bedrooms went down a little bit. And then what we'll do is we'll have eighty-seven parking spaces, onsite vehicle parking spaces in two levels. That'll include EV, the compact spaces, and the one APS space. And we feel very comfortable with that parking number. It's a number that I know Jeff and Ryan wanted to get to, a point two-seven. It's a number that we feel comfortable with, and then we've increased our bicycle parking spaces a little bit to accommodate the units. And so I'm happy to go through a longer presentation if you'd like, but I'm happy to answer any questions. We've spent some time, and we feel good about the parking.
Okay, sounds good, thank you, Ms. Vaz, Councilmember Hodge?
Thank you for the presentation, I don't think we need another, another full one on it, but when you were talking about the parking, thank you for getting there, because that's exactly what, you know, as we, some, most of us requested. When the parking, is that gonna be, how's that parking gonna be? Because I know we were talking about underground, or is it gonna be top ground, how's that gonna--
Everything's going underground. So we, we're, yes, so Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hodge, what we will be doing is having two levels underground. And so when we, the, what we talked about is the same building, you know, at ground level, a lot of restaurants, and so the additional underground was a little bit more expensive, so we added some more units to help us kind of overcome the cost. Obviously, that comes with more parking, but it helps the second level.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes, I'm comfortable with how you've done this, and I really appreciate everybody working together and working it out.
Well, thank you, I appreciate your patience.
You bet.
Councilmember Chin?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to echo those sentiments, thank you for working with our staff on this.
No, well, thank you.
Excellent. All right, anything else?
If I could just personally, I want to say thank you to Sonia. I've already said it to her before, but you're gonna be missed, as you know. So, anyway, I'm glad I was at your last meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Vaz, appreciate it. This is also a public hearing, so I'll check to see if there's anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on this item. Speakers will have up to three minutes. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to talk about this? All right, seeing none, council members, any further comments or discussion? All right, seeing none, once again, the third and final public hearings, once we are going to a third hearing, which is not usual, but since this was a major change of adding a fourteenth floor, adding a second level of underground parking, that will create a third public hearing, which will take place on April 4th, 2024, where a final vote will take place. The next section on the non-consent agenda is ordinances and items for second hearing and final adoption. There are no items under this section this evening. So that brings us to item number nine, current events, council announcements, and future agenda items. Council members may request that an agenda item be added to a future council meeting during their allotted time, but in accordance with the open meeting law, there should be no discussion on the item other than to clarify the request. Let's see, this evening, we're gonna start here. Councilmember Chin? All right, thank you. Next up, Councilmember Garland?
Hi, thank you, Mayor. I just want to say I'm sorry that I'm not there today, but my husband whisked me away on a anniversary trip. Our thirty-first anniversary was yesterday, so I'm sorry I'm not there with you. I just want to explain why I'm not there. But I also wanted to say, Sonia, I'm gonna miss you. Have appreciated the opportunity to work with you and to learn from you and to learn with you. Since I have been on council, so I just want to say thank you so much, we're gonna miss you when you're gone. I've especially enjoyed the conversations about our grandchildren, and I am so glad that you're gonna have more opportunity to spend with yours, so just wanted to say thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, very, very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland, Councilmember Hodge?
Yeah, I want to first start off with talking about my famous and love for Sonia Blaine. I love you so much, I don't think I found anybody as feisty as me but you, so you mirror me in that. You know, I'm gonna miss our conversations, I'm gonna miss our talks. I love you, lady, there's no replacement for you. And I also want to give a congratulations to our mayor. Me and Councilmember Chin said he was a slacker, because he only got, what, ninety-four percent? What happened to that other six percent? We just want to know, you know, slacker. Congratulations, Mayor. Congratulations, Councilmember Garland, on your victory. I'm happy to serve with you again. You make sure you tell Scott happy anniversary, and that I love you guys. Also-- Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I said I will.
Okay. Also, congratulations to Councilmember Keating, who is now hoping to be gambling right now. We hope he wins, we hope he wins. And also, we, I would like another congratulations to Nikki Amber, our new council member, so congratulations on that. And I have my couple of announcements. Come join me on April thirteenth for Breakfast with Berdeta. It's gonna be at Cul-de-sac, it's gonna be a fun one, it's a Tempe Pedo Plaza. It's gonna be about bicycles, so enjoy the breakfast food and learn about how the city in Tempe is gonna promote multi-moderate transportation. So that's gonna be a good one, and that's, as I said, April thirteenth from eleven AM to one PM. And also, you're invited to our Tempe, City of Tempe Amazing Housing Service Team. We've got our landlord, our Tempe Housing Staff, Tempe Historic Museum. I'm sorry, I can't even read today, but we do have our amazing housing team that's gonna be doing a presentation with our, if you're a landlord, and that's on March twenty-sixth from two-thirty to four. I just want to thank the Tempe Diablos for our charity, thank you so much from Tempe. As a, as a city council member, and also as a governing board member, thank you so much for that. And my last and final one is on March thirtieth for Kiwanis Park. We do have our Easter scramble, that's gonna be fun for our children, all come out. It's on March thirtieth from eight AM to ten PM, and it's right next to our North Soccer Field. And also, Tempe Beautiful will be hosting a park cleanup at nine-thirty on that same day. And I think that is the end of my announcements, thank you.
Sounds good, thank you so much. Next up, Councilmember Navarro.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Just real quick, I'll probably mention this next meeting, but Thirty-seventh Annual First Responders Picnic is gonna be Thursday, April eleventh, from six to eight PM, and that's at Kiwanis Park. And it's an every-year thing, it's a great opportunity for first responders to get together and just kind of share some stories and whatnot, but Tempe St. Luke's puts it on, and Sheila, who's the coordinator of this whole thing, she's been around forever as an RN at Tempe St. Luke's, and I think everyone in the community knows her, or has touches with her, if they've come into Tempe from other cities. So that's gonna be the Thursday, April eleventh, from six to eight PM. And then for Sonia, what a treasure. I have to tell you, I, you know, I have, I've really enjoyed you as our attorney. You're a straight shooter, you're spot on with things, you're great, you give us always great information, you always have a balanced opinion, I appreciate you so much, just what you have helped us with. And we've had some difficult stuff, right? So, your guidance has been very known, and not only just here in this council, but reflected in the community and with people that have worked with you, and I know other people with different sides of development, or even with our prosecution and judges and courts and everything like that. I mean, you've really served us well, and we really appreciate it. I can't believe you're leaving, but I have to say I'm jealous, and I hope you enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. Next up, Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first thing is, I want, my first announcement is the Arizona Theater Company. They are a new partner at Tempe Center for the Arts, and the acoustics are perfect in that venue. So I really appreciate them being, ATC being our partner, and they are putting on world-class plays. World-class plays, they are amazing, so a shout-out to them. Please consider going to the, to the theater, it's wonderful. And we have a new opening night for Masterclass, and it starts on Saturday, March thirtieth. And you can buy tickets at tempecenterforthearts.com. My second announcement is TCAA, one of my favorites, nonprofit agencies. They're having their annual fundraiser on April fifth from six-thirty to nine-thirty. Please attend to raise money for our most vulnerable residents in our community. You can purchase tickets at tempeaction.org. To our amazing city attorney, I love you, and thank you for all of your support and guidance. You have a very level head, and I just really appreciate all, everything you've done for me and for our, for our city and our residents. So, thanks, thanks for serving, and best of luck in your retirement, and I will be calling you for lunches. I want to congratulate our Mayor Woods for his amazing victory. Ran and opposed because everyone knew no one could beat him. So, I'm just really proud of you, Cory, I love serving with you, and I do listen to you. And I also-- I was accused of not listening.
It's an inside joke, but it's--
I was accused of not listening to the mayor earlier, but I do, I promise. And I want to congratulate Nikki Amber, you ran a hard campaign, and I also, Randy Keating, and Doreen Garland for their victories, and I look forward to serving with all of you. And, and that ends my announcements, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right, and just, yeah, just wanted to, like everybody else says, Sonia, thank you for everything, and we love you very much, and thank you for all the work you've done on behalf of this community. You are gonna be greatly missed, so thank you so much. You know exactly how I feel about you, so I will not repeat it in public, because you told me not to, so. Next up, item number ten here, public appearances. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address the city council? I've got one, actually, I've got a couple here at the end. The first one I have is Shelby Almond. Is Shelby Almond here? Okay, and the last person I have here is Erica Harper. Is Erica Harper available? All right, seeing none, is there anyone else in the audience here wishing to address the city council on item number ten, public appearances? If so, please get my attention. All right, seeing none, that brings us to item number eleven, which is adjournment. The next regular scheduled council meeting is on April fourth, 2024. We are adjourned, thank you very much, everyone, have a good evening.